This meeting of the City Council will come to order. Uh, Clerk, a call roll, please.
Joyce Elder.
Here.
Terry McLunk.
Here.
Dee Perkypile.
Here.
Mickey Schneider.
Here.
David Mitchell.
Here.
James DeVita.
Here.
We have six.
Stand for the pledge, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, brings us to approval in the agenda, motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Changes, deletions, corrections, Mr. Perkypile.
Yeah, number seven on new business is a repeat of number five on unfinished business, so delete it.
Oh, okay. Well, I read those two different. Number five and number seven?
Number seven, number six, cost estimate for contracting jetting and camera.
Seven hundred news, same as five hundred old.
You're right. It sure is.
There's two different ones. One says jetting, one says jetter.
Well.
Okay.
Really, it is a repeat.
I think it's.
Okay, it's a repeat, okay. So you want number five off, or number seven off?
Number seven.
Off a new business.
Oh, I have one more discussion. C A P C.
Yes, sir.
She took that.
I know.
Okay.
Next, Snyder.
Um, postponed table, whatever, put off unfinished number one. Um, I think that was it.
Your word wasted.
Number two would be, we haven't heard anything on it, so scratch it.
And that's because Ed was in the hospital for surgery and it's taking him a while to recover.
Okay.
Is fluoride off?
No.
Are you sure?
Mr. Mitchell?
I, I think I'm confused, 'cause I'm looking at Mickey's agenda and hers says at the top, review August financials 5:00 PM, which mine says, and then I go down under new business, I have a number seven that says, discussion of enabling people who live outside of the city to serve on the C A P C.
Oh, you have an old one.
I have an old one, that's what I've got.
You passed it down?
Okay, don't ever.
Okay, so are we supposed to have that C A P C discussion in?
No, I, I pulled that off until after we have these meetings, because I didn't want to interfere with the marketing meetings.
Oh. You want us to put it on for the next meeting?
Well, I don't know, do you have, do we have a?
You can do that on agenda setting.
Never mind. Agenda setting, yeah, 'cause I don't want that to get overlooked.
Anybody else? Okay, I want to make sure we got number one, unfinished postponed, number two unfinished postponed, uh, number two, new business postponed, and number seven off of new business. Is that correct?
One, two, and seven, yes.
Okay. Any other discussion on it? If not, all in favor of the amended agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay. All right, brings us to approval to the minutes for September the 8th, 2014, motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Commission Committee Authority Reports Expired Terms, uh, Nothing More Planning, C A P C, we have three nominations. One is Dustin Dooling, one is Ken Kettleson, and the other one is Charles Ragsdale.
Dustin is already approved.
Did you all approve Dustin already?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Scratch him, take him off, my bad. Let's go with Ragsdale and Kettleson.
Make a motion, rue Ken Kettleson for, uh, possession three, C A P C.
Second.
Position two.
What does it say, three?
Mine says two.
Mine says seven.
It is two.
Ragsdale, seven.
Ken is position.
Maybe you're looking at the hospital.
I mean.
No.
No, it really is two.
All right, everybody change, change on your agenda, position number two for Ken Kettleson, position number seven for Ragsdale, okay?
Question.
All right, we have a motion and a second on Kettleson, all in favor, say aye.
I have a question.
Wait, wait, wait.
Yes, sir. I asked, Mr., when we renominate, when people re-up, do they fill out an application or is that just an option? I thought we usually got something even for renominate, when somebody wanted to re-up. I'm just asking.
Well, Ken, usually we don't get anything from C A P C. They just nominate them, bring it to the council for, for a vote.
Mr. Kettleson is here, if anybody has any questions for him.
I'm just asking process.
Okay, anything else? Okay, on Mr. Kettleson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Next would be Mr. Ragsdale for position number seven.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no?
No.
Okay, motion carried, five one. And that's all the business on C A P C nominations. Um, I don't think we have any other reports, is anybody out in the hallway for any of the other? Okay. Not, probably not. See if you can grab the public comment board, too. Yep. I believe that's all the commission business we have, next would be public comments. First up is Rachel Bricks.
I'm one short, Mr. Weaver, I apologize. Rachel Bricks, one magnetic. On November 5th, eight semis worth of circus paraphernalia will be at Lake Leatherwood for two fifteen-hundred seat shows. Since the implementation of the Animal Welfare Act in 1966, the Carson and Barnes Circus has been repeatedly cited by the USDA for dozens upon dozens of safety violations, which is the packet you have there, including animal escapes resulting in injuries and deaths, failed fire inspections for the show's tents, even putting patrons at risk of tuberculosis from infected elephants. To date, Carson and Barnes has been cited multiple times, thirty-two years in a row. Circus animal abuse is not a myth. A simple online search reveals fear and pain as the method of training, and since no governmental agency monitors the actual training sessions, the abuse continues. Elephants, tigers, lions, primates, bears, even dogs are beaten with baseball bats, pipes, fists, they are kicked, burned, electrocuted and stabbed, or have food and water withheld to force them to perform. Carson and Barnes has even been documented using blow torches on their elephants. The animals are whipped, shocked, muzzled, drugged, and have their teeth extracted so they cannot fight back. This replica of a bullhook is the preferred tool for training, and as you can see, there's absolutely nothing humane about it whatsoever. These voiceless animals have no freedom and are enslaved by the circus, spending their lives traveling every single day of the year, cramped in filthy cages or otherwise in shackles, chains, being abused or forced to perform acts that are completely unnatural to them. Abnormal confinement and social deprivation alone cause these animals severe mental distress as evidenced by incessant swaying, pacing, head bobbing, and even self-mutilation. The USDA has found evidence of and cited Carson and Barnes numerous times, again, thirty-two years in a row, for abuse and neglect-related violations. Now, at some point, our town of Eureka Springs has realized that this type of treatment is unacceptable, and you have adopted codes to prohibit this type of abuse. I would turn your attention to, um, the Animal Care Code 60405, um, all of it is in relation to animal care, but specifically, I would call your attention to Section B, which reads, and I quote, "No person shall beat, cruelly ill-treat, torment, overload, overwork, or otherwise abuse an animal." Now, here we are inviting folks to this town to violate our codes, and we're going to support them, and we're going to pay them to do it. I don't understand. Many people in Eureka are opposed to the circus, what will our tourists think? This isn't a zombie tag thing or a music festival. In closing, I feel council should review the policy whereby groups of volunteers, whether with parks or otherwise, can orchestrate the use of our city parks. It should be mandatory that an event of this magnitude, impact, and risk appear before you, the city council, for the final say. Moreover, just as Pasadena, Boulder, Chapel Hill, Stanford, and numerous other cities and countries, twenty-seven of them in fact, and twenty-one states have done, I respectfully request that council enact an ordinance prohibiting circuses in Eureka Springs. It is not too late to stop this atrocity. My group has pledged to repay the $500 retainer to stop these folks from coming. I implore you to take action, and I leave you with a quote from Mahatma Gandhi, "We should heed. The greatness of a nation and its moral progress can be judged by the way its animals are treated." Thank you for your attention.
What was the date on that, Rachel? I didn't catch you.
November 5th, it's a Wednesday, they'll do two shows, one at 4:30 and one at 7:30. It's a Wednesday, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Did Leah Markham, I hope I said that right.
What was the district thinking? What was the park district thinking of these people?
Hi. My name is Delia Markham, and I am here tonight to respectfully ask council for Mickey Schneider to send the Carroll Boone County Water District a Federal Information Act request. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Rosanna Stone.
Hello.
Come in.
Hi, I'm here tonight also to ask that the council vote and have Mickey Schneider send a, uh, info, an FOIA request, and, you know, this is a very important thing that needs, this needs to be done right away, that way we can keep our waters here in Eureka Springs clean and free of any federal action chemicals that can hurt our bodies. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Charles Stanley and Jasmine Stanley, you can both come in at the same time. Hey, Charles, is Jasmine out there? Is your Jasmine out there?
Yes, she's out.
Why don't you just get her and bring her on in, too? She's next on the list, anyway.
Hi, I'm Charles Stanley, and this is Jasmine Stanley, and we are both there to ask that we, uh, follow through with our request to ask the, uh, Ms. Schneider to vote for this, uh, Freedom of Information Act report to Carroll Boone Water Authority. I mean, I'm really opposed to putting fluoride in our water, it's the purest water in the United States almost, except for Hawaii, probably, and we need to keep it that way, so I pretty appreciate your attention for this. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you so much, we really do appreciate the council and what you're doing to help us out, and we want to keep our water clean and pure, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Darlene Schrum.
I also am here to ask all of you of the council to vote tonight for Mickey Schneider to send Carroll Boone Water District an FOIA request, and I thank you guys so much for everything you're trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, that'll take care of our public comments, uh, brings us to unfinished business, number three, discussions of fluoride, motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second, floor's open. Mr. Snyder.
Um, you have in your packet, and I've already mislaid mine, a two-page thing on, I can't find mine now, two-page thing on, is it this one? The FOIA. Uh, there you go, looks like that, from the city of Eureka, two pages stapled together. Originally, I had wanted the city to send an FOIA to Carroll Boone, um, but in talking with our city attorney, he says FOIA has to be from an individual, not an entity. So I am asking that the city council do a verbal vote in backing of me sending an FOIA report, which you're holding in your hand, this is what I would send to them and expect them to answer the questions, um, to find out just exactly what all it is that they have plans of putting in our water. Now, most of these things that are requested, and it's very technical, so unless you're up on, uh, fluoride stuff, you're not going to know a lot of these terminology, but believe me, they do. A lot of that probably, I'm going to give a wild guess, of a minimum of ninety-five percent will not have an answer, simply because it hasn't been done, they haven't done it, so on and so forth. The biggest thing, though, that an FOIA request will show is, number one, our council, speaking for our city and our citizens, is showing due diligence and having the right to assure our people that the best and only the best fluoride is being used, as opposed to the worst, which, no offense, but it's coming from China, and it's industrial, and it's got lead, and it's got arsenic, and it's got all kinds of contaminants. We don't need to be putting that into our bodies, we don't need the state telling us to put it into our bodies. The biggest thing we need to do right now is to make sure Carroll Boone checks with every supplier of fluoride and picks the cleanest, best fluoride that's possible, not just whoever happens to answer. They're the only ones who can choose the product. Keep in mind that the public health policy is you cannot hurt individuals with bad stuff in their water, with any of those kind of things, it is illegal to do that, so it can't show up in our water. If it's arsenic, especially a lot of arsenic, they can't do that. The manufacturers of direct water additives, which is what fluoride is, have no affirmative duty to comply with any specific standards, believe it or not. These are people who make things to put in our water for our consumption, and they don't have to specify or meet any specific standards. The law does not make them meet any requirements, um, I don't understand why, but they don't. The only ones that they, that the law does require is the people like Carroll Boone that's going to add this to our water. It's their responsibility to use a manufacturer that has got all the laws and guidelines that have been put forth by the various, various health and state and federal governments. This is hopefully the first of two steps to avoid having fluoride added to our water. Until we get this answered, I'm not even going to go into step two, but we need to get this and get it done now, so we can get things done in a timely fashion, because they have their water board meeting in about a month, actually, a little less than a month. That's pretty much it, I just want y'all to say, as the council's representatives of the city, yes, send in an FOIA to Carroll Boone.
Mr. McLunk.
I guess I don't really understand what it is you need from us and why.
I just want a show of backing from you, the representatives of our, our clients, the city, our people. You've been hearing them here, out of everybody who has called us, emailed, written, or responded here, one person only has said, let's fluoridate. Everybody else has been against it. So I'm sending in an FOIA. What I want is a show with a verbal agreement from you guys, yes, send it in. We're representing the people, the people want this, let's do it. That's basically what I'm asking for.
Mr. Perkypile.
Well, it sounds like the FOIA ought to come, it's going to come from an individual or a group, and that's what, who you're representing.
It can only be an individual, is what I found out.
Well, you know, the individual, and you're representing a group of people, citizens and people that have, uh, that disagree with the use of this particular, uh, probably quasi-suspect, and I don't know, but, uh, form of fluoride application. You know, I, I don't have a problem with that, because nobody wants to have, you know, contaminants in water, and China does not have particularly good record regarding that, but, uh, you know, it seems like this ought to be something that Carroll Boone is going to be intimately attuned to, and they, they're not going to want to use a product that would do that, and, uh, so, I, you know, I, I say, yeah, I, you know, hey, go after it.
Thank you.
Ms. Ellen, go ahead.
The whole point is that we're just getting our ducks in a row. I mean, this is, um, an expression of moral support from the city council, because Mickey is on the city council, and as I understand it, none of this fluoride additive, and I've been getting lots of email on this, none of this additive is manufactured in this country anymore. The last supply of US-manufactured fluoride additive was in Colorado, and they used the last of it last month, and they voted not to fluoridate their water anymore, because that was the end of the source that they felt, uh, using. There is.
Less source.
There, yeah, there is, um, this is bad news, and this is just the beginning, and that's all this is, just, uh, uh, an expression of support, and I would like to move that we all just do a voice vote on support of it.
Mr. McLunk.
I'm, I'm not really sure that we can do something like that on an individual basis, I mean, that, the attorney'd have to say that. Did we not, did we pass a resolution on fluoride?
I was going to ask, I thought we did.
We sent them a resolution that we did not want it.
Yeah, I don't know that, that we, I don't know if we can do more than that as a group. I mean, that, I mean, our representative as the city is, is the mayor.
Basically, a show of affirmation to your constituents.
Well, Dee's already said, go for it, go for it, you've got my support.
See, that works, too.
Well, I mean, it's, you're not, you're not mentioning the city council, and it's...
No, I'm sending in what you, what you've been reading, what you've been holding in your hand.
Yeah, sure.
This is not an official vote and has no, no bearing on it.
No, there's nothing official.
Any resolution or ordinance?
Right.
It's just a individual count, okay. Mr. Mitchell, did you hear anything?
Since we've done a resolution, and, and it sounds like each of us have individually supported Mickey and her efforts, I, go for it, Mickey.
Thank you.
Okay, nothing else? Then we'll move on to number four, discussion of parking garage, motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Floor's open, Mr. DeVita.
I've had a preliminary meeting about the Walton Family Foundation, and it looks like we're going to have to go, uh, through a private organization to put in the request, so we're going to be working on that aspect of it. Uh, I'll, I'll keep you all involved in, as we proceed, but it's not going to come from the city, it'll have to come from private organization. Right now, we're looking at the C D P, which spun off the Downtown Development District, which was the group that secured the Save Americas Treasury grant for a quarter million dollars for refurbishing the auditorium, so it's a natural progression to use that same group to ask for the funding to provide the parking for the auditorium that, uh, we secured that first grant for, so that's the...
Of course, we're going to.
...be taking, so at this time, I'm just going to ask to have it taken off the agenda and...
I have a question.
Sure.
Um, okay, in regards to Crystal Bridges, hopefully, or Walton's rather, hopefully backing this, are we talking a hundred percent from them, or what? Or do you even know?
Yeah, yeah.
A hundred percent, and this would not be alone, this would be...
No, it'd be a grant. I mean, I mean, they, they funded Siloam Springs for two and a half million dollars to develop their whitewater park.
But that's, I mean, so this wouldn't be an expense to the city to build it, just our expense to, our expense to maintain?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, they understand there's a motion, take it off the agenda?
Please.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, it's off the agenda. Moves to number five, cost estimates for contracting jetter and sewer camera use, motion to discuss, Mr. Perkypile.
So moved.
Second.
Floor's open, yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I got a, an email from, uh, from P and P Plumbing, um, asking about, and this is really not so much just, it's not for a new jetter and sewer, this is really contracting the jetter and sewer camera, uh, use. Basically, a private plumbing company here, who the city is already currently using, has said that they would reduce their, uh, regular price for jetting from three hundred an hour to a hundred and twenty-five an hour, the regular price for snaking, a hundred and twenty-five an hour to eighty-five an hour, the regular price for camera work of a hundred and seventy-five an hour to seventy-nine per hour, uh, if they could be on, with no retainer, if they could be on, uh, like, uh, a permanent basis, you know, to be on-call, and they would respond 24/7. Now, having said that, uh, Public Works Director, Duane Allen, followed up, saying that he's, he's talking to P and P about, uh, jetting, because our jetter is not, not working, and that would be a good thing for us to do, is to be able to have that, that jetting done by contractor, but that there are some issues with, uh, the N P D E S permit, that's the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System permit, demands that we have a licensed operator with proper equipment, spare pipes, to maintain the collection system, you all have this letter in your packet. So, having said that, I mean, basically, we have to have, uh, we have to have a licensed operator, that would be a person from the city, uh, be present to do some of this work, so we're kind of trying to balance what, what we can do with this plumbing company and what the city has to be, uh, available to do. Just a second, follow up, finish here. The last thing is that, uh, most of the private companies only use, and, and P and P Plumbing is a similar, they only use a small sewer camera that's not really intended to be for the, the big mains, and so I discussed that in a previous meeting, and, uh, we talked about getting a, a new camera. So, looks to me like where we're headed for this is we'll probably do the camera work, uh, and we could probably use, uh, you know, uh, contract plumbers for jetting services, so, and, and possibly snaking, jetting and snaking, but camera work, we may wind up doing ourselves, uh, if we can get a new camera, so.
Mr. McLunk.
Yeah, that's, just the comment that I had, was that whether they did it or we did it in-house, we'd have to have somebody with that license there anyway, so, so, I mean, we're always going to have somebody on-site.
Yeah.
That's a city employee that's going to be there.
Well, the final thing on that was that liability issues, insurance issues, how does that work out? So Duane said he's going to follow up on that and figure out how that works, but if we contract somebody under the city's... But if we contract somebody under the city's...
They cover themselves.
Well, they're, they have liability insurance, but they're also covered on the city, and the city employee would be covered under us.
You mean for product liability for, you mean for, in that, or damage liability?
Damage, damage is what I'm talking about.
Property damage.
Mr. Mitchell, go ahead.
So Dwayne, at this point, would have an idea, Dee, about the number of jettings that we've done in the past year, so he could almost estimate the approximate cost for contracting to have the jetting and all of that done, I would assume. So when we get ready to go into our budget process, one, he could put the camera under capital equipment as a request, and then the contract services for this plumbing company could be pretty well kind of estimated based on historical data.
I think so. We don't have, he hasn't provided that information.
But we're coming up to...
But we're, yeah, we're working towards it.
Okay.
Ms. Snyder.
Did you ever get a chance to check in with Island about sharing these items?
No. I mean, they're kind of in the same boat as Eureka Springs is, in that they've got used equipment that is often...
Right.
...needed repairing.
Well, that's what I had said before, if we got new and they split the cost and we shared it, is this feasible or no, or...
You know, I haven't talked to Dwayne about that. There may be some possibility, may be some issues, I don't know. Does that sound like a politician to you?
Yeah.
Anybody else?
And you're not even running.
All right. If no further, we'll move on to number six, discussion of tree trimming. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Floor's open. Ms. Snyder.
Do we have any kind of information on the answers, actions, or reactions from SWEPCO or Splende, however you say it, in regards to our local citizens who sent in pictures and complaints in regards to trimming?
I think they've all been answered, from Jeff Milford and from Chuck Easterling.
Okay, so each individual has been answered, but we as the city have no idea what was said or done in any case?
It was between the individual and the...
Right. Have we gotten any word from anybody, from the people or anything?
Sure, yeah. Call Susie, any, what's her name down here? Holberg, I think is her last name? She's been working with them, trying to get all her stuff replaced from the outage, I guess, or the short, or whatever that happened in her house. They're working with her hand over fist.
So I guess what I'm asking is, do we have any idea how much of a positive response or reaction we have gotten from that in regards to damage?
I have no idea. No, we don't get that stuff.
Okay. And, oops, and it's nice to see that, starting in 1927, is when we started the franchise with SWEPCO. It's only in regards to charges. I would not mind paying $2.50 a month for my local work.
There is a, there was a vague statement on there about their, what they're granted.
Oh, okay.
That's not...
Oh, that's what that is. Yeah, and 1927, everything was entered into those big, huge books, handwritten. These things are awesome to go through, and oh my God, they're so hard to read. Okay, if I can try to read this. Okay, section five, the company, something, have the right to publish schedules of charges for use of electric energy other than these herein contained for each class of consumer as may be entitled to receive the same at rates either above or below those herein contained, and should have the right to publish and enforce reasonable rules and regulations covering the supply of electric, light, heat, and power to the inhabitant of the city of Eureka, Eureka Springs, Carroll County, Arkansas, in order to render reliable service and so protect the safety of the public. That's it, 1927. Y'all can read these later, it's kind of interesting, like, so I wouldn't mind the $2.50 a month for electric, but...
So the pertinence?
The pertinence is the stuff that I brought forth before, a couple meetings ago, in regards to what they can and cannot do, still pertains. That's the most recent guidelines. So if trees, bushes, shrubs, whatever, if they are hanging over the lines, if they are encroaching and possibly going to cause a problem, they have the right to trim them to a decent thing. They do not have the right to slaughter our trees. And that's exactly what they did do. I think it behooves us as a city that we take steps to ensure this kind of murder does not happen again. As it is, and you can go around town, you're going to see a lot of trees that are, A, going to come down this winter on the lines, or B, be dead by next spring. This is ridiculous. There was no need for it. We don't have to say why it was done. I've already said it, they've already said it. We need to take steps. So we need to ask our city attorney to write up a section to go into the ordinance that we already have in regards to their guidelines to ensure safety to our trees and our population.
Is that to make mention of all the trees they took out that were on the power line?
Well, since there are shrubs that would only grow 10 foot tall, and their wires are 20 foot up, and they cut them down to a nib, yes, that was...
I'm talking about trees, not shrubs.
Well, they did them all. They did trees, they did shrubs, they did everything. We need to write a good guideline to protect all of our greenery.
Mr. Weaver, you got any input on that one?
Well, a lot of that, that they did, they did on private property through their easements that they have with the private property owners. And we really don't have a say in what happens between a private property owner and a third-party entity. We're not a party to that action.
But we are, do have the right to say, I showed the guidelines. When the guidelines sit there and say, "It has to be endangering those lines," and there's no way a 10-foot shrub is endangering those lines, they don't have the right to go on that private property and whack it all down. We as the city are supposed to be the enforcers of protecting our people.
Actually, no. The, the courts are the protection of the citizens' rights to their property.
So the courts can answer after the poor tree is dead and gone? Doesn't the courts can deal and say, "You can't do that"?
Well, that's the way the system is set up. It's not set up for us to put city employees underneath those lines to pick out which shrubs are endangering. That is a matter between two private entities.
But why can't...
The citizen who owns the property and the power company, which owns the right-of-way.
But why can't we say, give specific guidelines in regards to, "You will have a tree expert with every crew," so that this kind of slaughter doesn't happen again? We're protecting our people, that's our number-one thing. Us people sitting here, that's number one, protect our people. Ergo, we should be able to sit there and say, "These are the guidelines. You will have a tree expert with every crew, or you won't touch a tree."
Ms. Snyder.
Okay, they are creating a situation that is causing a really unsightly appearance to a city that is a tourist destination and advertises itself as Tree City. So I don't see why we can't insist that when they are tree trimming, they have to have a certified arborist with whoever is doing the trimming to ensure that an unsightly condition is not created that would damage our appearance and therefore affect our tourism industry. I think we do have a dog in this hunt. I don't know what the law, what loop in the law we can use, but this definitely reflects on the appearance of the city, and our intel and our reception by our visitors depends on what our trees look like. And I'll tell you quite frankly, it's appalling out there, the ugliness that has been created by these, this apparently, I don't know where this company came from that they hired, but I have heard that the men that were doing the trimming didn't even speak English, so you couldn't even talk to them, even if you were a landowner. Now, this, this seems beyond the pale to me. There's got to be some sort of middle ground we can have here, or some sort of an agreement with SWEPCO that we cannot have this happen again, and there should be an arborist there to supervise these people. There has to be some kind of oversight.
Mr. DeVito.
You know, they have 14 to 20 trucks and as many crews in town all at once, working in different parts of the city, I, you know...
Too bad.
How many arborists do you want to force them to hire?
Well, they don't do it that way anymore because we don't allow it.
SWEPCO has arborists. We use them on the landslide.
Right. And they can cut back down again, besides doing it at a decent time of the year, which needs to be part of it. But if you have 20 trucks and you have two arborists, there's a problem. I look around the city and you can see the problem.
Mr. Mitchell.
If I listen to the attorney correctly, I think it came down to the individual property owner with SWEPCO and/or the tree trimming company, and the city didn't particularly have a role in that. It was the private property owner versus the company that was doing it. I think that people's interest in the tree cutting is at a heightened level now, and if they received the notices, which my understanding was, those that were going in the, in the line of getting their trees cut, actually did get a notice from SWEPCO that they were coming through. I didn't get one, but then I didn't have trees cut up, cut up on the historic loop this year. I think they came last year. So if it is between the property owner, I think it would behoove the property owner, who is now negotiating with SWEPCO, if in fact they felt they had damages, and it sounds like SWEPCO is responding to them. I, I'm having trouble finding where the city fits in that.
Or the overlords.
Any further? Go ahead.
I understand the difference between private and public property and where the city can go and where they can't. If we have guidelines, ordinances, sections added to it, whatever, in regards, I've got an hour, in regards to safety for our people, for our properties, for our health and well-being, which includes our businesses, we can and should put that in there. And if that means you will have a tree specialist go before every section being cut, I don't care if they stand there as they're doing it, as long as they have hit every single one and told those crews, "You cut those, you don't touch those." You know, whatever. And guidelines in regards to time. I don't care if this is a slow time of year for them, this is the most deadly time of the year for trees. My husband doesn't know squat about any of this stuff, but he knows, and when he found out they were cutting trees, he's like, "It's going to kill them. You want to kill a tree? You cut it really short now." And that's exactly what's happened. We need to have guidelines specifying tree specialists for every place it's going to be trimmed. We need to specify a timeline as in you do not cut during the heat of the year. It's not that hard to do, and if they have a problem, they can come talk to us about it. But these notices that went out, number one, were not real clear. Number two, if people were working, they couldn't be there, they did not expect this massive slaughter. They figured it'd be like every other time when they've come home from work and the trees have been trimmed, big deal. We've got to take steps to protect our people and our greenery.
Mr. Perkett.
Well, let's wrap this up, because there's nothing we can do. Our lawyers already said there's no steps this City Council can take...
Can we?
...to intervene between two private entities, so I think it's in subject.
Can we, after hearing this, can, is there something we can do?
Not along the line of what you're suggesting, I don't believe.
Well, then what can we do, along what line?
Well, we've, the City Council has now informed the citizens that they have claims that are being made against or through SWEPCO, and SWEPCO is responding to those. If people have problems, they should take them up with their...
What can, what steps can we take so this doesn't happen again?
I don't know...
The law doesn't work.
I don't know that there is any steps...
Okay, can we end the franchise and rewrite it?
Oh, please. Ah, no, at this point, I don't think we can pull their franchise. Because there's nothing that indicates that they have violated their franchise at this point.
They killed off our trees, that isn't violating the health and well-being of the citizenry?
It's not in there.
That's prices.
And if you want to respond in that manner, what you may get is they may come in here next time and simply clearcut.
They already did.
Under their power lines and the trees, because that will eliminate the unsightly tree limbs that stick out into nowhere.
Well, they pretty much already did that all over town.
I mean, you're suggesting that they hire the arborist, their arborist would then work for them, and that is one result, to not leave you with unsightly tree limbs sticking in every direction, would be simply eliminate the trees completely.
Okay, so why can't we add a guideline, whether they follow it or not, at least it's there, and we can hold it up to them, whenever they're going to show up and say, "Okay, you will not slaughter our trees."
Then you have to have an arbitrator who is going to determine what is slaughter of a tree.
That wouldn't work.
And really, that is in existence right now. That is the court, if it gets that far, between the private landowner and the private company that is cutting those trees, and the SWEPCO.
Mr. DeVito.
Recommend to Councilwoman Schneider to research and see if she can find anything of other cities in the country that may have a solution to this, but right now, we don't have a solution here.
How about authorizing me to go talk to SWEPCO in person?
Any further? All right, I'm moving on. Number seven, discussion of hospital and bonding company.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Floor's open.
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
The finance director was in contact with the bonding company and got a letter. Did you get a copy?
You should, everybody should have a copy of this right here.
Did you get that?
I have not.
They were giving rumors or...
Yeah, I have not.
And anyway, he got that from them, and just, it just, it just puts down in paper what, what's already been discussed and kind of, it's, it's kind of like a loan approval subject to certain conditions, you know, a letter, it's not like, not a loan approval, but a letter of commitment, like you get from a bank, you know, subject to certain conditions. So...
I got it in here, I just got it fine.
That needs to be, have they been in touch with you anymore, Mr. Weaver, as far as contact?
No, they have not made additional contact. The person that they indicated was going to be making that contact for them has not responded to my attempts to email him either, so we're, we're getting no contact from them at this point.
Surprise, surprise.
Do you need this, Mr. Weaver?
I'll get one from someone.
Just take it with you, that's good. Any further on this issue? Yes, sir.
You might forward them a copy of that.
I will certainly do that and make another request that they contact us tomorrow.
That's, that's all we can do.
Okay, no further discussion, moves on to new business. Number one, ordinance for six two-hour parking spaces about a library. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Floor's open. Mr. DeVito.
I would move to assign this ordinance a number and place it on its first reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Stand by.
The ordinance number will be 2218. An ordinance to amend library parking, whereas the city of Eureka Springs, the city, currently recognizes the need to grant extended parking in the area near the library, and whereas the City Council believes that Chapter 8.40 of the municipal code needs changes to more effectively deal with this issue. Now therefore be it hereby ordained by the City Council of the City of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. Arkansas, section one, that section 8.40.17FF of the municipal code is hereby amended to read as follows. FF, six two-hour free parking spaces are established on the west side of Spring Street in the vicinity of the Carnegie Library and Crescent Spring. The six spaces shall be painted with white curb and marked with a sign stating, "Library Parking Only." The two-hour free parking shall be in effect from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM, seven days per week. Section two, all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. Section three, that in the event that any section, paragraph, subdivision, clause, phrase, or other provision or portion of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, the same shall not affect the validity of this ordinance code, code section, or chapter as a whole, or any part or provision other than the part so decided to be invalid or unconstitutional, and the remaining provisions of this ordinance code, code section, or chapter shall remain in effect.
Mr. Mitchell.
I liked everything in here except under section one where it starts, "The six spaces shall be painted with white curb and marked with a sign stating, 'Library Parking Only.'" If you put "Library Parking Only" on the six spots, nobody's really gonna, that's gonna be 24/7, not 11 to 5, seven days a week. So it would look like those spaces would mostly be reserved 24/7 for library parking only, by the way the sign says. I'm a little, if I was driving by and it was nine o'clock in the morning, it says, "Library Parking Only," I'm not gonna park there because I'm not gonna know. So I'm just, that's just my only, maybe I'm not being correct.
I agree. So don't you want tab time on there?
I, I don't know, I'm just, that's the way I was reading it, and I may be totally wrong.
Mr. Weaver.
I would suggest that you might want to change this. This is the code wording that we have now, except changing it from one hour to two hour. I would suggest that if you want to make it a specific time on the sign, that you can direct that in that next sentence, that the sign say, "Library Parking Only," and give a specific set of time. But our code cert, at this time, does not do that. And so I simply took what was there and changed it from two to, from two spaces to six spaces that are marked that way, and from one hour to two hours.
Mr. McClung.
Now, maybe I just missed something. But it's in the ordinance, so you can make the sign up any way you want to. So what you just said.
Well, you could do that, or you could put in the ordinance itself in that second sentence where it says the.
Well, it's reflected in the ordinance that the time period is from 11 to 5.
But they don't.
So you can make the sign. You can put it on the sign. We have the right, you can put it on the sign. It doesn't have to be in the ordinance that it has to be on the sign. It's in the ordinance. So you make your sign up, put it on there.
You could, you could add it to, they could add it to the sign when the sign shop makes the sign.
Library Parking 11 to 5.
That's not a problem.
Mr. Perkypile.
Doesn't the current sign have the time on it right now?
It's my recollection that it does.
It does, yeah.
On the current sign, although the code doesn't give a specific.
Okay.
Other than the way it is right here.
Mr. DeVito.
Move to approve ordinance number 2218 on its first reading.
Second.
Mr. McClung, do you second?
I did.
All right.
Happily.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Yes, sir, go ahead.
I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2218 on its second reading by title only.
Second.
Stand by, roll call.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Eller?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Perkypile?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Six zero. Ordinance number 2218, an ordinance to amend library parking.
Mr. DeVito. Move to approve ordinance number 2218 on its second reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Stand by. Yes, sir.
Well, I'll risk the ire of anybody that we pass something on the third reading in one night, but I'll move to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2218 on its third reading by title only.
Second.
Stand by.
These are such pigs.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. Perkypile?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Eller?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Oh, yes.
Six zero. Ordinance 2218, an ordinance to amend library parking.
Mr. DeVito.
Move to approve ordinance 2218 on its third reading.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Roll call, okay.
Discussion? Do we, do we need to tell someone to make up the new signs if we pass this, this faster?
We will make them according to the statute or the ordinance.
English, please.
It's whatever, it has to say whatever the ordinance says.
No, 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 I mean, the signs have to be made for the extra spaces. Do we need to tell someone to get the signs?
Public Works will have them made.
I mean, that's the thing, so we don't have to say, and by the way, we're, we don't need.
Whenever we do an ordinance that regulates or has signs in it, then Public Works takes care of the signs.
Okay, without us towing them.
That's why we have the mayor.
You don't have to.
That's, that's my end of the deal here.
You don't have to.
Yes, you have to print them up and take them down there, please.
Yeah, it'll be like that Sunday one, they got the $250 check on it.
Yes.
All right. Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Eller?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yeah.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Perkypile?
Yes.
Six zeros.
All right. Mrs. Solton, number three, discussion of ordinance 2217, Ed Vorm, third reading. Motion to discuss.
Second.
Okay, maiden seconded? Yes, sir, Mr.?
I would move to suspend the rules and place ordinance number 2217 on its third reading by title only.
Which one is it?
Ed Vorm text.
And there was a second?
Is that Mr. Mitchell, up in the second?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, stand by.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yeah.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Perkypile?
Yes.
Ms. Eller?
Yes.
Six zero. Ordinance 2217, an ordinance levying attacks on all real and personal property in the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas.
Mr. DeVito.
Move to approve ordinance number 2217 on its third reading.
Second.
Stand by.
Yes.
Ms. Eller?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. DeVito?
Yes.
Mr. Perkypile?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Six zero.
Okay. Moves us on to number four, new business, discussion of having hospital commission meetings taped and occurred in the jury room. Motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Floor's open. Yes, sir.
I just felt that this time, given the nature of a 15 to 20 million dollar hospital and the city having to come up with a million dollars to provide sewer to said hospital, that it should be available to the public to see what the hospital commission is doing at this important time in the city. Quite frankly, some people don't even know we have a hospital commission, and I just feel that there should be a record of this that people can access. And I feel it's not too much to ask them to meet here in the meeting room and have it videotaped. It doesn't have to be live, it could be taped and then rebroadcast, so they're not stuck at a certain time.
Ms. Snyder.
Have you even discussed this with the commission? Brought it up to them, asked them anything?
No.
Okay, I would highly suggest discussing with them first. Mr. Mayor, you've gone to every meeting. Are there normally that many people there as there have been the two-time cycles there?
No, not usually that many.
Okay, like six?
Hospital, the hospital board didn't even show up last time. The hospital commission was there, the hospital staff did not show up.
Okay, and we're talking commission, yeah.
Okay, we're talking the commission there. Everybody was there except for one person who was out of town. Last time, nobody from the hospital showed up.
Right.
So any, any news, updates from allegiance was none to be had.
Okay, so normally, are there that many people there watching and are taking?
No.
Okay, that was my question. Or is this room big enough when they're having that many people show up? The two times that I've been, it's been a lot, so.
Yeah, there's six members on the commission. Yeah, this would be big enough.
I still think you should talk with them first before we take any kind of action.
I.
Just to be polite.
I'll ask them.
Thank you.
I'll pass it on to them. Okay. Any further on that one? If not, moves us on to number five, status costs of new Public Works building. Motion to discuss.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
Okay, didn't miss, go ahead.
He, Bonnie, well, no, it was in our box. We got a report from Mr. Allen. And in the second paragraph, and it says, "The plans for the new maintenance facility have been sent to the state for approval. We are finalizing total project cost, new utilities, and design improvements, and should have them to use soon." So there has been an architect involved, I know.
Mr. Barry.
Yeah. And so apparently, and I think it's correct, is it's gonna come back here before anything is done.
Yes, sir. Any cost change will have to be approved by the council. And from my understanding, the only, the only changes in the plans is where we had a standard four-inch reinforced slab that came with the building. Due to the weight of some of our vehicles in the maintenance section, we had to make an eight-inch reinforced slab to incur the extra weight. So whatever adjustments that'll be with Floyd's, we'll, we'll know.
Aren't we using the same slab?
There is no slab, it's just a concrete pad.
Where the building is now?
It's just a concrete pad, it's not even a reinforced floor. From what I understand, yeah.
And but when the, the new building, we're just gonna take that building down and put the new one right there, in that?
Yeah, everything comes up, because we're gonna have to start brand-new with it, because of the.
But in that exact, that same footprint, basically.
Well, it'll be longer and wider. So we'll have to change the pad in. Yes, sir.
Could somebody remind me, why, why we didn't do competitive bidding? Because I forgot. And it, all of a sudden, I was thinking the other day, and I know there was a reason, and I don't remember it. Seriously.
We'd have to go back and look at the minutes to find out.
Well, they're already building the other station out here, and.
Well, that's Fire Department.
Well, it's the same company.
I forgot, okay. That was my question, too. I just wondered if we, if this had to go out for competitive bidding.
Yes, sir.
I think we, we didn't put it out for bid because we were gonna try and get it done expeditiously, because the old building was pretty sad chic.
It is, it is very bad shape, yes, sir.
That was, that was our decision at that time.
So we declared an emergency, essentially.
Basically, yeah.
Couldn't go through another winter.
Yeah.
I think that, I remember that discussion. Is that what it was?
Yeah, that's what it was.
If we have the winter that we're expecting this year, we may not have a Public Works building, period.
They may take it down for us.
A lot of people are really anxious about all the shovels they're finding in the perseverance now, as opposed to spoons. Yeah. You never heard that one, Mr. Perkypile?
You don't know that?
Oh, you gotta do some research on that one.
I taught voice comedy.
All right. That moves us on to discussion of number six, summary of tourism workshop, motion to discuss.
So moved.
Floor's open? Oh, wait, you got to have a second.
Second.
Okay, go.
Just to give you a short summary, we did have a meeting, our first meeting, had quite a few people attend. We had a, CAPC had two members and additional support. Chamber had a couple of members. City had several city council persons and some administrative people attend. We did have a lot of business owners and people interested generally in tourism in the city. Tourism and, and revenue generation. You know, I guess the bottom line out of what I get out of this is, even from the CAPC's numbers in tax generation, we're basically floating along. I mean, we're just barely maintaining. And so we decided to have another meeting coming up, and it will be this Thursday, 9:25, September 25th, at 10 o'clock in the Chamber, Chambers Building. And this is really to kind of get a, get a little better feel for this particular, this is, we're still calling it a workshop right now, but we're trying to maybe get this generated or move towards some sort of commission or task force. And, Mr. Mayor, we'd like your, your input on that, if we could, in terms of perhaps a mayor's task force for tourism economic development.
We'll try it again.
Mayor's task force.
Yeah, we'll try it again.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay.
And, and we'll just, we'll just revive it, what you've already started, and has already been started. And just continue on. I think what I took from the meeting was, yes, we're okay, but we're starting to, as our finance director has said, we're starting to dip into our reserves, and we're not putting back into those reserves. And so we're paying our bills, but we need to, we need to look at how we can generate more revenue, because we've got a lot of infrastructure we need to repair and maintain. That's all I have.
Anybody else? Okay, no further comments. That will take us out of new business and put in the agenda setting. Mr. DeVito.
Nothing here.
Mr. McClung?
Zero.
Mr. Mitchell?
Nothing.
Mr. Perkypile?
Yeah, I'd like to have a summary of the next tourism workshop.
Ms. Snyder.
We need to have that discussion about the CAPC limits and changing that. I know an ordinance has been offered up, but we at least need to discuss the possibility of making one of the seats outside of city limits for CAPC, which by law, by state law, we can do if we change our ordinance that says within city limits only, because an awful lot of our business people do not live in city limits.
Would that be an at-large seat?
Yes.
Okay, it doesn't have to fly with the tour, or the?
No, an at-large seat.
Okay.
And it's gotta be Carroll County, but I don't know if we'd have to specify within And it's got to be Carroll County, but I don't know if we'd have to specify within Carroll County. I believe we would. And then I think we need to have, I think we need to have a talk with Parks in regards to this circus.
Do we have a second on that?
Oh.
You ever need one on?
And we also need one for Deets.
Mr. Perkypile, did you get a second on this?
I don't think I did.
All right, we need one on the summary for the next tourism test workshop.
I'll second that one.
And then we skip to the, Ms. Snyder's, out of city limits seat from CAPC. We need a second?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, next.
Okay, we need to, I think we need to have Parks come and discuss the circus situation. I've been hearing from a whole lot of people how unhappy and upset they are about the animal situation, and I think we need to talk with Parks because I don't know if that's something we can just say, "Sorry, you're not doing it," or, "Yes, you are." I have no idea how that works. And so, I think we need to invite Parks. Well, and their monies are autonomous. That doesn't mean that we can't have a discussion with them.
No, I didn't say that.
And maybe we'll change their mind. Anyway, so I think we need to invite Parks to come and discuss the circus with us, pros, cons, and the offer that was made tonight.
Ms. Elder?
Well, I could, what the heck, yes.
Good.
Continuing on that vein, I'd like to ask the city attorney, what is it we can do about this? I can see a massive objection to this once this word gets out. Yes, I've had a lot of email about it, too. And I know that Parks, the way they are written, they are a separate entity, and we have very little oversight over what they do legally. So, are there any other options except having a discussion with them? Is there any legal option we have here if we object to it, or would rather not have that?
To give you a full answer, I would like to have until next council meeting because honestly, I don't know that there is, but to, it's been a while since I've reviewed that particular part of it, and I'd like a chance to review it again.
Okay, so then all I would like to do is just ask you to review that in preparation for the item agenda for the next meeting.
I'll second that if we need a second. Come prepare.
Good. Any further from anybody else? Not goes on to council comments. Mr. DeWitt? Mr. McClung?
I just really enjoyed, of course, the Dancing With The Stars that was done locally a couple of weeks ago, and then the Friday night program and the Saturday night programs at the auditorium for the Jazz Festival were primo, both of them, excellent.
Mr. Mitchell?
I'd just like to thank all the public and the interested people that attended the workshop on economic development slash tourism. I think the input is appreciated, needs to move past discussion, and really starts coming up with some measurable action to be effective, and we appreciate it very much.
Mr. Perkypile?
I don't have any.
Ms. Snyder?
Oh, well, I might as well. My two-year-old granddaughter, who I swear is now becoming famous, took second place in West Fork's very first West Fest, our first city festival, took second place in their beauty contest. And I'm a women's liver, so there was no makeup, no sexy clothes, none of that.
Ms. Elder?
No, I don't think, no. No, I can't follow that.
Okay, list of events for the end of September and to the middle part of October, September the 24th through the 27th, Box, Booze, and Barbecue has been held in Fayetteville, Arkansas, and everybody knows that's one of our bigger weekends here in Eureka Springs. And I want to make it very, very apparent that we are not part of Box, Booze, and Barbecue. There are some private businesses that do participate in some of the actions over there. With that, September the 25th through the 27th, Box, Bibles, and Barbecue, Rally and Ride at the Great Passion Plate. So, they're getting in on the show. September the 26th and 27th is the Eureka Springs Motorcycle Art Show. It's the second one, be held at the auditorium on the 26th, 27th, Friday and Saturday. September the 27th, the World's Fastest Indian Classic Movie at the auditorium, 7:00 p.m. If you haven't seen it, it's a very well-made movie, whether it's about motorcycles or not. It's Anthony Hopkins. I own a copy. It's great. And it's a true story, too. October the 2nd through the 5th is Corvette Weekend. October 3rd through the 5th is Balance Living Expo in the Ozarks. October the 4th is Eureka Palooza Outdoor Festival at Lake Leatherwood Park. October the 4th is Drumming in the Park at 6:00 p.m. October the 5th is the Sound and Music Classic Movie at the auditorium, 7:00 p.m. October the 7th through the 11th is the 67th Annual Ozark Folk Festival. October the 11th is the second annual, or the second Saturday Music in the Park, 5 to 7:00 p.m. October the 11th, the second Saturday Gallery Stroll, 6 to 9:00 p.m. And starting October the 1st, excuse me, haunted hayrides at Bear Mountain Log Cabins all month long. Any other input from anybody? Yes, ma'am?
Our next council meeting is scheduled for Monday, October 13th, which is Columbus Day.
It'll be the second Monday, scheduled for second Monday.
Yeah, that's October 13th is Columbus Day. Is that one of the annual federal dates?
No.
So, the city is open?
Columbus took a chance, so we can, too.
Just wanted to verify.
Nothing further, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, we are adjourned.
See, he took 7:15, which is what I...